Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 21st, 2021 Lexington City Council Meeting. Welcome friends and neighbors and special presenters this evening. Glad you're all with us and excited for the evening. Having called this meeting to order, I would ask you all to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. A little challenging in virtual world, but you all did great. Thank you. Our next item is consideration of the agenda, and we do have a request for two additions. One is under Boards and Commission Reports, a Recycling Committee Report for Mr. Smith. That's number seven. And also, under the City Attorney's Report, number fourteen, the Emergency Declaration in Order for our Virtual Meetings. And unless there's an objection to adding those, and is there anything else that council members would like to have on the list, on the agenda? Hearing none and not hearing any objections to those two additions, we will adopt the agenda with those modifications. I do not have any proclamations for you this evening, and we'll move directly into presentations. And we'll call the city manager to introduce our first presentation from the WNL Consulting Team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. Yes, we have a team here consisting of David Shook, Mr. and Miss Catherine Andres and Mr. Ned Mize. And they started working with the WNL faculty and myself, exploring possibilities for a research project and something that was meaningful to the to the community, to the city last summer. We developed or identified economic development as an area of interest, broadly speaking. And within that area of interest, they decided to work on multifamily residential housing, hospitality and lodging, commercial and retail and professional office space, and come back with some recommendations as to how these particular areas of economic interest might benefit the city. And how the COVID and other economic factors might have changed or change be changing these areas as related to investment and opportunities for the city. So I think they did a great job, a wonderful report to share with you this evening. And because we have a long agenda, I would just let Mr. Shuck take over and provide the presentation to City Council.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm just gonna get that pulled up here. I don't think I'm able to share my screen. Is there any chance I can get screen sharing privileges? Thank you. Awesome. Well, thank you so much for allowing us to, you know, present this to you. We had a great time doing it. We learned a ton, and hopefully we provide something of value. So just get right into it. This is just kind of what we're going to discuss this evening really briefly. We're going to talk about essentially kind of what we, how we attacked the project. Starting off with very briefly, our takeaways, kind of what we kind of ended up recommending after all of our research. How we went about our research, what our project looked like from a broader level, who we interviewed, and then after that, getting a little deeper into kind of the rationale behind our recommendations. So yeah, just to start off, once again, I'll briefly kind of state what our takeaways were for each of the four sectors. As for multifamily housing, our biggest takeaway was that, you know, at the current moment in time, this seems like it could be something that would be a good development opportunity potentially, and we'll get into some of that rationale a little more deeply in the coming minutes. As for hospitality and lodging, this is a business sector that we kind of decided that at least in the short term would probably be something that should be avoided. Doesn't seem like the best investment opportunity at the current moment in time. However, down the road, it could potentially be a good area to look into for a number of reasons, which we'll get into once again. As for commercial and retail, once again, this is something that we said, at least in the long, in the short term, this should probably be avoided for a number of reasons. However, in the long term, kind of with a caveat, this could be a good business opportunity or business development opportunity to consider. And lastly, for our fourth and final sector that we researched, professional office space. This is something that we, we kind of said we couldn't necessarily opine on at the current moment in time, given that we, we lack some current, some important information or some information we felt would be important to really, you know, decide this was a solid business development opportunity. And so we'll get into that a little more detail later. As for our research approach, as Jim kind of outlined, we decided to look in these four main sectors, multifamily housing, hospitality, lodging, commercial and retail, and professional office space. And we really divided our research or the project in general into three phases. First off, we started with broader industry research. This was generally, you know, a broader market, like nationwide level, looking at how these industries had been performing historically, how, how they've been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And so after, after going at those things from a broader kind of nationwide level, we conducted a number of interviews trying to get those Lexington specific insights that were difficult to obtain through, through research. And after those first two phases, we kind of sat down as a group and compiled the information and tried to decide, you know, what are the big takeaways for each of these four sectors we were looking into. This is just a, you know, a quick breakdown of who we interviewed, kind of their positions. We ended up interviewing a total of 12 people from, from a variety of backgrounds. And yeah, we went, we're all for us, and we'll get into some of our takeaways here in a little bit. So we're going to get into really some of the broader industry performance. Once again, this is like a market-wide nationwide level, but it helped, was really helpful in providing us some context into these industries. First off, just talking about multifamily housing, prior to the pandemic, the industry was doing quite well. Demand, you know, was strong, vacancy rates were relatively, you know, in a good position historically speaking. Rent growth was strong, you know, just above historical average. And across the country, there were generally an undersupply of housing in the multifamily sector. So looking good prior to the pandemic. And as you would expect, when the pandemic hit, you know, there are a number of negative impact.
Am I the only one who lost sound?
Yeah, we've lost.
Maybe Mr. Mize or Miss English could take over? Is that possible? Are you there with us?
Yes, I can hear you. So basically what David was going to say that because of the pandemic so far, there has been a significant drop in demand for multifamily housing throughout quarter two, and that the drop in demand corresponded with an increase in lease renewals. So this suggests that individuals stayed in units instead of moving out. I think we lost the screen because David disconnected.
I pulled up the deliverable, so if someone could share the screen with me, I can get back to where we were. Okay.
That's a movement on the feet. Good work.
Thank you. So this is right here. I believe, were we on COVID impact? Catherine?
Yes, we were. Thank you, Ned.
Sorry about that. My, my internet cut out. Not sure what happened there.
David, we were just finishing this slide if you want to.
Okay. Yeah, apologies for that. So yeah, we're talking about, yeah, multifamily housing, you know, with the pandemic, as I was saying. You know, it, prior to the pandemic, it was doing quite well with the pandemic, you know, things weren't looking good. You know, next, next slide, please. And yeah, this is where I was.
Catherine, I think we lost him again. Can you step in for him?
Yes. So what David was going to say is that the pandemic has slowed construction industry. Completions are expected to be lower, and it could ultimately help rents and vacancy rents, which have been impacted by a slowdown in demand. And he said there's a lower percentage of rent collection compared to pre-pandemic conditions. So that's a concern to be worried about. And moving forward, the market is closely tied to broader economic conditions, and the economy is unlikely to return to its full health until the vaccine is administered. So the industry depends a lot on that, and that employment growth and household income are key drivers for rent growth, which also depend on the economy coming back after the pandemic. And there's also a potential shift in renter preferences who may desire larger size rental units with more green spaces as more people are spending more time at home and working from home.
Hold up. I'll go ahead and take over this really quick. So hospitality and lodging is a very cyclical sector. And it was actually experiencing a downturn after solid growth the past decade. Obviously, the pandemic has had a very tough impact on this sector. No one's traveling. No one needs to really stay in hotel rooms right now. So revenues have gone down. And so that's the basic overview of hospitality and lodging. And Catherine, you can hop back into commercial retail.
Yeah, so we researched trends in the commercial and retail industry, both pre and post COVID. And we found that the industry was already experiencing a downturn and undergoing changes prior to the pandemic. And this travel is really driven by a drop in consumer confidence and spending during the 2010s and also the rise of e-commerce as more and more sales are occurring online and thousands of retail stores have been forced to close throughout the decade. And brick and mortar retailers have really responded to this by trying to compete by providing their customers with a unique in-person experience that can't be found online and also by embracing technology and opening online channels for shopping to achieve growth and avoid closure. And the pandemic has only served to accelerate the trends in this sector as consumer confidence is again down and families have less disposable income due to the crisis. And e-commerce sales obviously skyrocketed when online shopping became the only option for consumers when brick and mortar stores were closed. But unfortunately, those online sales for most retailers did not make up for the lost brick and mortar sales during the store closures. So in order to reopen, brick and mortar stores must focus even more on providing a safe and unique in-person customer experience to bring customers back into the store and improve their profitability.
And professional office spaces, it's an interesting area right now. Vacancies obviously increased due to the pandemic. It's supposed to peak around 16% in 2022. But according to a study that was done earlier in the year, that will decline back to pre-pandemic levels. And all this is dependent on the longevity of the pandemic and the sustainability of remote work. I think at the beginning of the pandemic, everyone was concerned. They thought virtual education would never be able to work. People could never do business from home. But as time has gone on, it's proven to be quite efficient for people, actually. Studies have shown that it's made flexible for a lot of individuals, people with families. And because of that, companies are saving a lot of money on rent expense. So we have to take that into consideration moving forward. And as a result, a lot of studies are predicting an increase in satellite offices, which is something that City of Lexington should consider moving forward. And so like David was saying earlier, we talked to some Lexington-specific people that know this area a little better. So with multifamily housing, we found that the market is underserved for multifamily rentals of all three types studied. And so there's a lot of different statistics, and for the sake of time, I'm probably going to have to run through these at a different time. But a lot of the housing within Lexington is aimed at students, and so a lot of non-students in families are underserved. Quality is not great. Housing is always going to be needed. So Lexington can cater to this desire for larger square footage and increased access to green space for certain families. There are short-term risks because of the pandemic and rent collection and that being deferred. But overall, we, we think this is a great sector to consider and.
And then I'm back, so I can, I can, I can hop in if I don't have any more technical difficulties. Apologies for that, everyone.
If you, if you want to touch on anything that I missed, go ahead.
No, 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 that sounds great. As for hospitality and lodging, some of the main considerations we heard through our interviews were that these two pretty major national hotel chains were planning these lodging projects in the area. And so with that said, assuming, assuming, you know, markets.
So I guess I can pick up where he left, but there are a lot of outdated and lower quality hotels in the area, and many facilities haven't been rented in recent years. But because the hotels in Lexington are often at full capacity because of WNL events, BMI events, the Virginia Horse Center, and it's just as a tourist destination. There is potential room for growth in this area, and it's also traditionally a large source of tax revenue, which could be attractive to the city. And so throughout our interviews, we learned that many retail establishments in Lexington struggled to turn a profit prior to the pandemic. Many of our interviewees noted that many brick and mortar stores in downtown Lexington were more retirement projects than profitable business ventures. And with that consideration in mind, the city needs to focus on incentivizing motivated while resourced entrepreneurs to start profitable small businesses in Lexington. And an example of an incentive the city could offer was the Launch Lex program, which led to the creation of several successful small businesses such as Make It So, Just Games, The Lex Running Shop, and Heliotrope, which all provide a unique experience for the customer that can't be found in line. And additionally, a lot of our interviewees noted that there is a unique demand in Lexington for niche upscale dining and resale establishments because of the mix of retirees, students, and tourists. And so this additional man, demand means that there is room for growth in this sector in Lexington.
So we interviewed a couple of business owners in Lexington who actually have tried out professional office spaces from the pandemic. And through other interviews, we realized that the bottom line is that a lot of people are kind of desperate to get back together because we're social animals. We want to be in a physical location with each other where we can get work done and just interact with each other. Like I was mentioning earlier, working remotely has been nice for some people. It's flexible. But at the end of the day, a lot of people and employees are working at like a crazy household. They have a lot of kids. Things can be hectic. And so overall, we think that, one, the pandemic is probably going to last a lot longer than we think. Two, remote work will probably still remain a thing, given the efficiencies that we've seen and the low cost for companies. And three, because of those and the demand in Lexington, professional office spaces could be a unique profitable investment. But the problem is that we need to figure out how much demand there is specifically, sorry, I turned on Siri by accident. How much demand there is specifically in Lexington. So we're not buying too much square footage to invest in it. Because like I said, we interviewed a couple of people. One of those was Lyle Lee, and he has a coworking space called Start Here. And it was basically just a storage area above his actual primary business where he would run out to people who approached him about it. And he actually got a variety of customers, people, one guy from Connecticut who wanted to work in a different scene, a student who had to do classes and stuff. But he didn't really market the area as a coworking space. So it wasn't a profitable business venture. With that being said, just because of these random people coming and wanting to use this space, there is some demand here, and that will probably increase as time moves on. So the question that we have before, like proposing a specific investment is more research needs to be done to figure out what that demand is, how many people would actually want. So we could figure out the square footage. So these are just a summary of the recommendations we've already made. Multifamily housing, proceed with development. This is a strong area. And so that's our recommendation. Hospitality and lodging, due to its cyclicality and the pandemic, especially right now, it's too risky to, to invest in currently. But we consider in the long term, as we deal with the pandemic, travel increases. And Catherine, I think it's commercial retail.
Yeah. So we concluded that while there is a strong demand for retail stores that provide unique in-person experiences and diverse dining options in Lexington, the city may struggle to find entrepreneurs that are willing to open small businesses in this climate because those are the this industry was hit hard by the pandemic, and it may take a while to come back. So we do recommend that the city should not make investments in this space in the short term. But in the long term, they should, the city should consider ways to incentivize entrepreneurs to open small businesses when the pandemic does subside.
And lastly, like I was just mentioning, professional office space, coworking space developments could be a profitable business venture. Just more research needs to be done to gauge that demand. So it's not overdone. But that is all we have. Apologies for all the technical difficulties and kind of the unorganizedness of it. But I don't, I'm not sure if we have any time for questions, but it was, it was really great being able to present this project like David was mentioning. We learned a ton, interviewed a lot of great people, and it was really exciting. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ned. The town and gown relationships are important and always encouraging students to get a little bit more involved and understand a little bit of the town and stray off the Washington League campus. So congratulations on accomplishing that and for your good work. And I just want to. And I just want to also point out that really appreciate your interior design or decorating skills, I like your Virginia flag, great. Do members of council have any questions on the matter or the information presented? We certainly reserve the right to come back to you, David and Catherine with questions after we've digested this report a little bit more. But thank you for your work and efforts and again, congratulations on terrific product. And if you have additional questions or ways that we can improve our city, I know that city council and myself are eager to hear your ideas from your experiences in the city as students, as well as the work that you've done here this evening. So thank you again for being here.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
For the semester. Next presentation is from the Planning Commission Chair and we're in deep gratitude to John Driscoll for his services as the chairman. And John, if you'd like to take it away. John, I believe you're still muted.
Thanks, Frank.
You have to get Catherine to do it like David did.
No, no. Anyway, good evening and thanks for the opportunity to present the annual report of the Planning Commission. So this report is, and you have a copy of it, with some hot links we put in there to the comprehensive plan and presentations. It's a summary of the activities of the Planning Commission in 2020 and we also took a look ahead to 2021. What is it that we wanted to be working on this year? So in 2020, we had 20 regular meetings and in April, similar to yourselves, we began holding virtual meetings due to COVID-19. We also went virtual for the public forum and related public hearings for the comprehensive plan, which was well-done by the Berkeley Consulting Group. So in addition to the 15 applications that are listed in the table, a significant focus of our work was to complete the comprehensive plan update that began in March of 2018. After a draft was presented to the public in a successful virtual forum in June of 2020, we worked on revisions from July to September. And I think we mentioned this before to you, but using a comment tractor tracker that was managed by the team from the Berkeley Group and available on the city's website, we reviewed a considerable number of public comments, including the importance of presenting a fuller account of our city's history and taking a more proactive role in promoting inclusion and equity in planning, housing and the delivery of services. In September, we held a public meeting and recommended approval of the plan and this was followed by the joint work session with the city council where we presented the organization and content of the plan and highlighted its emphasis on implementation. The city council adopted the plan in November 5th after another successful virtual meeting. The emphasis on monitoring and implementation is important, given that it is not unusual in the planning profession to find that comprehensive plans, even a good one, may have a lonely life on a shelf and are not actively used. So learning from best practices, Lexington's comprehensive plan includes an annual review to monitor the progress on implementing the strategy. It strengthens the linkages to the capital investment program. And lastly, as a first nominated, some catalyst projects to be pursued in the first year after its formal adoption. The idea of the catalyst projects was new and working with the Director of Planning and the City Manager in cognizant of our advisory role, we outlined a process where the Planning Commission nominated projects and looked to the City Manager to provide the feedback and recommendations based on availability of staff and resources, as well as an understanding that some of the projects would require city council approval. The projects recommended by the City Manager and endorsed by us, this, the commission include the ones that are listed in the plan and to save time, I don't need to read them all to you, I think you're familiar with them. Regarding the annual review process, that will help keep the comprehensive plan current. Together with Arnie and Jim, we've suggested a preliminary timeline and a process tied to the capital improvement program calendar. We recommend that this process should be finalized and shared with the city council and can include a joint work session that we discussed in our meeting in October with the council. The annual review will help keep the comprehensive plan a living document and provide clarity on the Planning Commission's advisory role in maintaining the comprehensive plan. You could think of the commission as the stewards of the plan, not necessarily the implementers of it. Moving on to another topic, in October 2020, we began the annual review of the zoning ordinance and approved the discussion of 26 potential amendments. Some of the amendments are potentially straightforward, housekeeping items as Arnie described them and others such as amended use and design standards for accessory dwellings will require more time and we want to give ample room for opportunities for public input and research on best practices. In addition, we plan to consider an update on the subdivision ordinance, which is something that really lies with the city council to say yes or no to going ahead with that. And we expect to hold educational work sessions on different aspects of the comprehensive plan, such as the potential benefits of using small area plans to proactively guide land use decisions. And lastly, we'll schedule a joint planning commission meeting with our colleagues in the Rockbridge County Planning Commission to identify and discuss potential planning initiatives that bring mutual benefit to both the city and the county. So in closing, the commission would like to thank the city council, our current council liaison Leslie Strong, past commission chair Pat Bradley, past commission member Camille Miller and the citizens of Lexington for allocating their time and resources to plan its future. The positive feedback received on the comprehensive plan reflects the high level of engagement in the development of the plan. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge all members of the P C, the Planning Commission, for the time and efforts they contributed this past year, especially on the comprehensive plan update, which was a time-intensive process. Two of the Planning Commission members were also part of the previous zoning update and together, I think what you have in Lexington is a planning commission that now brings a considerable amount of experience to its work. We continue, we encourage Lexington's residents and businesses to engage with us as and their participation will enable us to do better advise on actions that represent the collective vision of Lexington. And lastly, I know I speak for the entire commission to we want to thank the city's hard-working planning staff, Arnie and Bonnie, for their professional and outstanding leadership. We couldn't have done what we did this year without them. So I'm available for any questions and I think Arnie is here in case I need a lifeline for something I can't answer. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the Planning Commission team and the great work they've done the past year and great work, I know that'll be forthcoming in 2021. Do members of city council have any questions or comments? Very good. One of the best things about our annual visits such as this and annual report is staying connected with the Planning Commission and then again, being able to offer our appreciation and to have a better understanding of all the things the Planning Commission is considering. Leslie obviously has hands-on knowledge, but the rest of us to get up to speed with things that are going on that we don't make all the meetings. So thank you to your team and to your good work and look forward to a strong and successful 2021.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Architectural Review Board Annual Presentation and Report and Caroline Alexander is with us. Caroline, thank you for being here and the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The Architecture Review Board this year in 2020 saw the adoption of the historic, of Lexington's Historic District Design Guidelines, something we're very proud of. Majority of work was done in 2019, but the formal adoption came early, I think it was January of 2020. The A R B is pleased that the local businesses and city entrepreneurs coming before the board to present their designs and ideas are engaged and very receptive to all of our questions and most, most of all to our suggestions. The A R B continues to foster collaborative spirit for design solutions that support the economic prosperity of Lexington's Historic Center. We saw, I think, 26 different, we approved 26 out of 27 certificates of appropriateness. And we had a, just a great year moving forward. So many thanks to the city staff, Arnie and Bonnie, for enabling that seamless continuation of our bi-weekly board meetings as we went online, as well as continued the timely review and processing of all applications. So we really didn't miss a beat at all this year. So thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Caroline. Members of council have any questions? Hearing none. Caroline, please express city council and my appreciation for all the good work that you all do. It's critical for businesses to have their signs up and sometimes the colors don't match up right and you all have a tough task in helping guide people to understand the regulations that make our city so special and appealing to folks that are visiting and residents alike. So again, thank you very much and.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Look forward to your good work in 2021. Next item on the agenda is a presentation and review of an unsolicited economic development proposal comes on the heels of Washington Lee's recommendation for housing. At this time, I'd like to call on Edwin to, or I'm sorry, call on Jim to introduce Edwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very recently, the city has received an unsolicited proposal for the development of the Spotswood property. And as is customary with such proposals, only general details were shared with staff and reviewed by staff and then presented to city council as, as proposals and recent confidential reports. The project itself does repeat, does achieve and encompass many of the strategic goals of the city council and planning commission. And has, and has been clear over the years, the comprehensive plan and city council strategic plan are both envisioned and recommended that the Spotswood site be developed in a manner that provides long-term financial benefits to the city and achieves other goals contained within the comprehensive plan and strategic plan. Some of these goals include adding to the housing supply, providing more modern housing stock or professionals for economic development purposes, young singles and couples, creating opportunities for locating housing relatively close to the downtown to support local businesses and to use the site in a manner that contributes to and enhances the stability and value of the surrounding neighborhood and uses in the area. And the presentation is even will introduce the proposals to the community and city council for appropriate review and discussion during the weeks ahead. While this proposal is very targeted and certainly seems to be, meet many objectives of the community, it has not been formally reviewed, is not being brought forth for recommendation of approval at this time. At this time, it's recommended the council carefully review the details and merits of the proposal prepare for consideration or possible consideration of the proposal at a future date. While it's not necessary tonight, city council may also wish to direct the city attorney's staff to work on the possible purchase agreement that you'll see later on and make a further recommendation to that agreement. In the meantime, city council should probably encourage, the developer is very interested in having public listening sessions where the public can comment on these, on this proposal and the details of the proposal. But there's no action required of city council at this time. And Mr. Edwin Gaskin is here with us to go over the details of his proposal.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, City Manager Hallis. Good, thanks for the introduction and good to see everybody again. It's been a while, it's been a kind of a crazy time since we saw each other last. The world is, is very different, but we continue in our same objectives of trying to make our corner of the world a better place. We do have a few slides to share with you this evening, but I'm not a big fan of death by PowerPoint. So I want to present these slides, but you know, essentially open the, this venue and any later venue to a dialogue, want to make sure questions get answered and questions that we can answer get put in a place that we can answer them eventually. So I'm going to jump right in, but once I exit the slides, I'd love to have a dialogue as to what you think and where we might go from here. Okay, so what we're talking about is, is a potential development of the Spotswood parcel. This is a partnership, we're approaching this as a partnership between our firm and a firm called Urban Core Construction. I will introduce both firms this evening and we do have principles from both firms in the meeting tonight. Okay, the address is, is 350 Spotswood Drive, it's about a 3.2 acre parcel. It's mostly vacant land and the former Rescue Squad building, which currently houses a community table in Rara. Our goal is of course, the eventual relocation of the community table in Rara and their vital functions. What we're proposing is a multi-phase, multi-building, new residential development here. Approximately 150 units of new construction, which will be at least two buildings and likely two buildings because of the site constraints. Surface art and because it's a small site, really it's the surface parking that will be the limiting factor. Our product specialty is really smaller units geared towards a very targeted clientele. You know, professionals, you know, singles, couples. We understand that in this market, as in so many others, affordability is an issue and we tend to achieve that even in a market rate privately financed setting by unit design. We tend to have more smaller units that are designed specifically for somebody starting out in life, seeking housing opportunities at the earlier stages of their career. There is a purchase contract, a draft purchase contract that's in the hands of city staff and the city attorney under review. We are offering $350,000 for the parcel. You know, what we do as a firm, and I know this speaks as well for Urban Core as well, we redevelop infill sites. We've done a lot of historic sites, we've also done, you know, vacant land sites. But the theme amongst them all that they're not currently the highest and best used. We focus, even though we do have some commercial product in our portfolio, we focus on housing and we like that because it keeps employees local that support local businesses. I think one of our distinguishing features is that we are owner-developer operators. We eat our own cooking in the proverbial sense. So whatever we do here, we're going to be neighbors for a long time. So we have vested interest in making sure it's done right, it's operated right. You'll see the same faces such as they are from start to finish during this whole process. Urban Core is a, is a experienced Richmond-based construction firm. I don't like calling them a construction firm because that tends to be sort of limiting the concept. They've impressed me over the years in the fact that they have actually more of a development focus and they have developed some significant new construction projects around Virginia and that's what we thought. Teaming with them here makes a lot of sense. Urban Core really approaches their, their, their excellence as an investment and the three Ps as they call it. People, planning and process. I've been doing this for close to 20 years and I've learned that my development project can be no more excellent than the excellence of the field superintendent on the job site. So investing in your people, particularly your field people, is the best investment you can make. Urban Core and Echelon Resource as teams, we believe in planning, really approaching these projects from a planning perspective, getting feedback from the community and leadership and other stakeholders and then setting out a course of action with some shared objectives. Then it's all about process from there on out. So these are the investments we make before we even start swinging hammers. And I think it's something that's really distinguished us from more commodity developers or commodity contractors. Why we do what we do, we like waking up in the morning and working on things that have meaning, things that reinvigorate communities, things that transform negatives into positives. A lot of these sites, particularly some of the historic properties we've done had real relevance and then fell into obsolescence and we've made them relevant again to new generations. What we do produces new taxes, new jobs and most importantly, creates high-quality spaces. Again, there's, there's nothing wrong with the site currently, but there's nothing great about it either, other than the good work that Rob on the community table does. But as a site itself, it's certainly underutilized. You know, what we like about the Spotswood site is the fact that it can really be a product that's connected. We're a big believer in getting out of the car, walking, biking, really the fact that Lexington has what. We're a big believer in getting out of the car, walking, biking, really the fact that Lexington has what Lexington is is already a tremendous starting point. And what we want to do is be additive to that. And we think the site, as underutilized as it is, could capitalize on that and contribute to that. As the, the Washington Lee folks talked about, we're really in a new environment now where one works, plays and lives all in the same environments. And we want a residential development that allows for all of those things, not only within our walls and within our boundaries, but connecting with those assets that are nearby in the community. And again, going back to Lexington, that is the reason we're here. It would be difficult to do this kind of infill sites in most other markets. So the site itself being adjacent to vibrant neighborhoods, important historic sites really adds to its appeal. In terms of how we want to take it forward and we're going to design for success, as I talked about, we focus more on smaller units, primarily studio and one-bedroom units. We're proposing here a cap of 20% on two-bedroom units. Again, this isn't an affordable housing project per se, in that it's not a low-income housing tax credit project. It is a market rate project, but we were able to achieve that kind of results in market rate projects at typically in some of our other markets by our design focus. Why does housing matter? That was covered in some of the prior presentations. It's part of your strategic plan. It matters because we live places and where people live drives a lot of their decisions, both in terms of economic impact and in terms of where employers want to be. We're not going to develop a product that appeals to everybody. We're really targeting those folks that may otherwise be priced out of Lexington or really not find the kind of product that syncs up with the transient nature of their first couple of years out of school or their couple of years teaching in area schools. We're really looking for that early career client. And then of course, we believe we can deliver something that really speaks to style and appeal. We've done that in other markets. We believe we can do that here. And, and that's, that's our goal with the Spotswood site. Currently, certainly the Rescue Squad building is obsolete, deteriorating, and it is essentially old in terms of its limiting architectural features. The site itself has some above and below ground utility locations that are going to have to be reworked as part of this. But we are proposing a mid-rise four-to-five-story complex with multiple buildings constructed in phases. That will, doing it in phases will allow us to work with Rara on the community table to transition them, giving them maximum time to whatever we do, whatever change we're going to do is going to result in disruption and dislocation of their important services. So we want to give them as maximum timetable to plan their next phase. And we hope, and our goal is that what we do here really is additive to the value of the surrounding neighborhood. Here are some projects that Urban Core that have pulled off in terms of new construction around Virginia. Again, what we're talking about is a four- or five-story structure, a little bit taller than the examples you see because of the smaller site. Again, facades vary, structures vary. Those are things that'll be worked out in the design phase and certainly with our dialogue with planning commission. But again, it's a new construction project. Urban Core brings to the table a deep bench of experience. We have John Reed, whose experience you can see here. And again, these notes will be part of the, the notes for the city council meeting, so you can review it at your leisure. Then in terms of operations, again, Brandon here has the kind of experience we'd like to see on this new construction project that's atypical for this kind of market in Lexington. What we want over the next couple of weeks is community engagement. We'd love to hear feedback, complaints, criticisms, anxieties, concerns, compliments. We'll accept them all. So what we've done with the city team is set up a series of Zoom meetings at different days and different times in case people's schedules don't sync up for one, they can come to another. But these are just listening sessions where we can hear ideas and concerns from the community. And then of course, come back to city staff and city council with the results of that and perhaps a tweaked proposal and a tweaked purchase contract, so we can find a way that'll move forward with maximum community feedback. And again, these Zoom links, nobody needs to be scribbling them down. They'll be part of the, the PowerPoint that's circulated as part of the notes package and they'll be available through the city as well. But we try to do it at differing days and differing times for maximum engagement. We thank you for your time. Happy, I'm going to exit out of this and really open ourselves up for any sort of questions. As city manager said, we don't, we're not really requesting any action tonight. We're just introducing the concept and the, and the purchase contract draft for review and happy to answer any questions.
Edwin, thank you for the presentation. Exciting project and interesting details. I look forward to more. Council members, do you have questions for Edwin this evening on the concept that he's presented?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Gaskin, thank you for your presentation and thank you for setting up the Zoom calls. I think that's a great idea. I'm really glad you're doing that. But I guess my question had to do with the maximum 20% two-bedroom units. You, you explained that a little bit, but I, I, I'm, I'm a little surprised that in your experience in other, in other projects like this, I mean, is, is the demand for one-bedroom units mostly? I mean, that, that seems like a low number, the 20%. I'm just kind of curious about that.
That's a great question and, and I wish we had a fully scientific response to that. But based on our experience, the most of our demand really comes to the one-bedroom. That's the workhorse. Sometimes based on the design, there'll be a one-bedroom with an office or a nook or something like that. We tend to focus on that because that is really what our targeted client seems to need at that point in their, their life. Again, there is, while being subject to all, all the fair housing laws and such, we really focus on that, that 25 to 45-year-old professional, single or couple at a job, at a school, starting a job, transitioning to a new career. Generally, they're not looking to buy a house. They're looking to be in a, a place for a year or two before they buy a house or before they relocate on. There's always a demand for two-bedroom. One of the reasons we try to keep that, that particular product type low is that once you start to get into heavy, into two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, you start to get into schools impacts and other kinds of impacts, which generally create other kind of financial burdens that create concerns in, in such dialogues as these across the table. So that can certainly be tweaked, but we found that, you know, our approach to be focused on one rooms, one bedrooms to be quite successful.
Edwin, while still staying on that theme, when you say one-bedroom, what's the typical square footage of a one-bedroom apartment?
Again, there, that, that'll vary by, by project. I would say, I'm going to just pull an educated rabbit out of the hat here. I would say they're probably in the 700 square feet, seven to 750, kind of in that range. You know, it, it really depends on the layout of the floor plate and the constraints of the building. Sometimes we can make a really well-designed 550-square-foot unit work. Sometimes that will lease better and be more appealing than a poorly-designed 800-square-foot unit. Again, our, 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 our focus is really excellent design. And again, I know probably a lot of us on the call have a tough time envisioning ourselves in that kind of a space. I know my family with four kids couldn't fit in that kind of space, but I'm not at the time in the life that, that I would, you know, choose to, to live there. So we're, we're really trying to build for the client that we know that, that's needed. It's, it's interesting to us when we start marketing these projects even pre and during construction, the kind of outreach we get from prospective tenants. Some of that is, is quite appealing, gratifying, and other, other words, you know, you almost get heartbreaking stories, like I'm moving to this area and I need someplace to live and I can't find any place to live. It's, and that's, that's frustrating to them. That's frustrating to employers. So really, we try to partner with employers to execute with their human resources group and their recruitment efforts. And that's actually worked quite well across the Commonwealth, particularly in smaller markets. We've done a lot with teacher recruitment in terms of placing teachers that are coming into the area. And I, I think that again, helps us wake up in the morning with a smile on our face that we're doing something of worth.
Absolutely. Thank you. Members of council, Leslie.
Edwin, it's good to see you again. Will these be apartments or condominium condos?
We are going to approach it as an apartment, as rental product. Yes, ma'am. We think that is the right approach. We're not going to preclude the idea of condominiumizing later. But I think for our approach with this product, it needs to be a rental product. And that's going to help us really get the financing we need. This is a, this is a big capital project in terms of the size of the market, of Lexington's market. And so we're going to have to approach potential lenders with a solid case that this is financially viable. And we think it is, based on the data that frankly, you all have produced. The studies that the city has produced really provides sort of a running start for that discussion. But we think the rental approach, market rate will have more legs under it in terms of financing than condominiumization from the beginning. Because we're talking about multiple buildings, we could see in the future the possibility of converting at least one to ownership down the road. We're going to design it with that in mind.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
I was wondering if you have completed the rent comp study to determine what kind of rents you will be asking people to pay?
We have not dived, that, that's an excellent question. We have not dived that deep into the, the, the market studies yet. We have seen the data that the city has. I believe it's from the Dantor study and other informal comps that we've researched. But really, we have to dive a lot deeper into that to have anything that gives us comfort and potential lenders comfort.
I'm in property management, so that's a big curiosity for me.
Well, and, and we know that, you know, new construction, ground-up, multi-story development, there's nothing cheap about that. All of it's expensive and, and the cost of materials, even in the last three months, lumber has, you know, in some cases doubled depending on the beast. So we're, we're, it's always a balance. And at the end of the day, the economics of the project have to produce a feasible result. So, so the rents have to be there. And that's going to put pressure on us again in terms of design to allow for an element of affordability that will appeal to a wide variety of, of potential clients. We're not, I mean, yes, we're going to have a diverse economic clientele. Our goal is not just sort of a luxury product. We want to have an upscale product that could serve the luxury customer, but also folks that, that may need more of an affordable ladder rung to, to have that kind of quality housing unit.
So your, your rent comp could tell you in the future that you might need more two-bedrooms than the studio one-bedroom. Are you flexible enough that you could accommodate that?
Well, we want to be. We don't know all the answers and we're very data-driven. So as we get into it, I mean, your, your council is, is very prudent. So I do think that as we get into this and we get more into the research, there may be the case for more two-bedroom. That's going to though sort of impact parking ratios and impact all sorts of things, which of course, we're in a very constrained site. So it, we may end up, Ms. Alexander, that the product that the data is telling us may be more appropriate for a different site that may be larger, that may be able to accommodate more buildings and/or more parking. I think this particular site will require a nuanced approach and it may not be all things to all people. We have to sort of pick our client and, and market to that client.
Yeah, the, the market trends tend to fluctuate. So I don't know what your comp is going to tell you down the road. I was just wondering about, you know, whether you're willing to increase that 20% or?
We are definitely willing. Again, we're, we're, we're proffering that at the very beginning discussions with the city to potentially head off any concerns about schools impacts, stormwater, parking-related impacts. But if we all feel collectively that a better mix is warranted, we're totally open to it. Now's the stage to do it. You know, if we're so lucky that the city council decides to move us forward and approve this purchase contract, that just starts the process where we start with design, the market research, the engineering. And in our opinion, you know, within reason, we're in the reasonableness buoys, the product can be tweaked. So we can ensure its best chances of success.
Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler. Thank you for the presentation. What other vacant land sites besides possibly, I guess, Market Square Four, has you, have you done? Because I know, man, I've looked at some of your other projects, you know, we've been, you know, trying to partner for several years and, and you know, your project, South Boston, I mean, that's incredible. I watched the video today. It's absolutely incredible. And, and other projects that you've done, but vacant land, what, what have you done?
Sure. Well, Echelon Resources per se is focused on the historic redevelopment side. And that's why we focused on Urban Core. So the, the projects that I presented on the PowerPoint are done with Urban Core team directly or Urban Core principles. So I would have to get back to you, David, on that in terms of that portfolio list, but it's, you know, based on the PowerPoint that I presented.
No, sounds good. I, that, that's fine. And, and typically in this type of pro, type of project, do your buildings include a bunch of amenities like, you know, workout facilities and, and, you know, laundry? I mean, just essentially everything for, for your tenants?
Yeah, I mean, to, to get the kind of rents that we're going to need to support the debt that, that finances the cost of the project, there is a strong amenity package involved. Obviously, the fit and finishes of the units is, is just one, it has to be a quality, appealing space. Typically, there's in-unit laundry facilities in every, every apartment. But beyond that, we're talking about fitness centers. We're talking about business offices. We're talking about parking facilities, you know, we big believer in connectivity. So we're talking about bike racks, bike facilities, other things that would appeal to what essentially is an urban site, but more of a suburban product. So we have to create a balance there between the small site and the ability to, to pull off a, a multi-story product there.
And then since we, since we have you here and since you've scheduled several forums, if you will, and we're going to, you know, we want to get information out into the public and, and, you know, am, am I correct? And I think Arnie's on, on the call. I mean, this property is zoned RLC, residential, light, commercial. Would the project most likely be developed via a planned unit development? Throwing that out there, just again, trying to head off questions or get things out in the open. And for folks that may not know, our zoning allows apartment buildings to be 60 feet tall, I believe. Is that right, Arnie?
David, that is not. In the RLC zoning district, it allows 35 feet and up to 45 feet, provided that the side yards increase a bit.
Okay, but a planned unit development of apartments, it does allow 60 feet height?
Correct. It does allow additional height. But I'll let Randy and Edwin answer the question on if they're even intending to do the PUD, because that's not my understanding at this time.
Perfectly fine. Again, I didn't want, want to miss an opportunity to get things out in the public. At least what people will come with questions about, that first forum, you know, so that's why I kind of bring that up.
I appreciate that. We're going to take notes on that and make sure we have a, a more defined answer come that first community forum. Thank you for that.
Another member, Charles.
Yeah, please.
I have a question. It sounds really good. It also sounds like a WNL student development for student housing. And there's been an issue in this town surrounding WNL student housing. And I was wondering what impact WNL student housing might have on your project?
Well, that, that's, that's a good question. Certainly, it's a variable. It's a, it's a powerful economic driver in Lexington. We are not student housing developers. That is especially niche of developers. We are market rate housing developers, you know, by fair housing laws, we can't preclude a qualified applicant to live there. But certainly, we aren't designing with a student clientele in mind. Our orientation is more towards a professional crowd. And we're going to operate accordingly. So I would think that, again, this is not an inexpensive project because of the multi-story, new construction aspect of it. And the rents will be such that even for a WNL student, may not be as appealing as it would be for somebody out of the marketplace that's working. may not be as appealing as it would be for somebody out of the marketplace that's working.
Yeah, this is, this is Randy talking. I was going to say that, you know, part of the reason that we focus on that one-bedroom heavy design was specifically to, to address that concern of student housing. Most of the student, student housing, you know, purpose-built projects are heavy on the four bedrooms. Oftentimes, you'll see them actually rented by the bedroom. And so by, by designing this with a heavy focus on the one bedrooms with some two bedrooms, we were actually intending to, to, I guess, dodge that to some extent and, and serve some other folks that we may feel, you know, are more in need.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Smith.
Uh, yes, thank you. Mr. Gaskin, really excited about the project. Looks, it's really good. It's, the Spotswood property has been kind of a hanging thread for quite some time. On your proposal highlights, number three, I'm sorry, number four is relocation of the Community Table and the Rockbridge Area Relief Association and their vital functions. And one of the, I think we're all going to get that, that question's going to rise to the top pretty quickly as to what's, you know, what's going to happen to those organizations. And I'm curious if you and or City Hall can, can elaborate or shed some light on, on, on that highlight.
Sure, I can, I can tell you what we know and what we don't know. And then I'll defer to Jim to maybe do the same. We've had a lot of discussions and, and well-intentioned hand wringing over what to do about this aspect. The last thing we want to do is be a negative factor in what those two groups do. We have had a dialogue with RARA in particular to preempt. We didn't want them finding out about this at this meeting, so to speak. So we had an advanced discussion with them that I thought was, was quite productive and we understood each other a lot better. From that, we, with the city outlined a parameter by which at least 12 months would go by from the moment that you all, you know, authorized the purchase contract to be executed to when they would have to move. So we built that into what we would do. But we also just had a free-range discussion with RARA about what their goals might be for this next phase. Could they use this disruptive opportunity to sort of find a better facility that, that meets them more of their long-term goals? So we're at the very beginning of that dialogue. We want to help them any way we can. And we think that beyond the inconvenience and disruption of change, there may be opportunity for them to land in a better place at a better facility that better suits their long-term needs. Beyond that, I don't know much, but, but I'm committed to a dialogue with them to ensure that the damage is minimal and the, and the potential for success is maximized with them. But I'll defer to Jim if he wants to lean in with that.
Well, as Edwin said, we did have several conversations, myself, a few more with Kate Crossman from Community Table and Jen Handy and some of her board. They've been aware for months, literally several years, that the city was looking at this and at some point they would be having to move. I know that RARA in particular did not want to start having open community discussions because it would ask, it would lead to questions that would rise in the community. Why are you, why are you looking for another spot? So they're very pleased now that this conversation is occurring so they can go out into the community, look at their supporters, look at their partners and stakeholders and say, what can we do as a community to put us in a better place? So it's not like they want to, they're pleased to be out on the street. They're not going to be out on the street. They're going to be looking for other developments or other possibilities that will actually produce better outcomes for them. And the Community Table is also very informed, trying to look at their options now and hoping that the community will come together and support them. And Mr. Gaskin has been very gracious and down-to-earth in saying, hey, I know at least 12 months are available to you during this process and perhaps more. So you're not going to be out three months from now or six months from now and having to, you know, work out of a garage somewhere. So.
If I could just.
The dialogue will continue.
Oh, thank you, Jim. You know, personally, the last thing we want to be is, is doing something bad to something good. And certainly, those two groups do a lot of good for the community. I do believe there's a way to work together that they end up in a, in a better place so they can continue their good work. We've been lucky enough for quite a while now to work on great projects that are additive to the community. And we want this to be continuation of that. I know developers can be cast in a negative light and sure, certainly we have our own share of flaws, but generally, we do good and we want to continue doing that here.
I appreciate the position that y'all have taken on this. They, they do fulfill important roles in this community and being proactive on, on their success is definitely appreciated from this seat. Thank you.
Thanks for raising that issue, Chuck. I know Jim's been very eager to follow the path the cities followed before with development. Certainly, when the now gin hotel was renovated, there was displacement of residents. And the city worked hard to make sure those folks had a smooth transition and I think did a good job and people in the end were in a better situation. So we're working collaboratively as you have, and I'm sure we will going forward, will ensure positive results. Members of council, any other questions at this time? Certainly, there are three public meetings that we're welcome to attend and invite the community to attend. Those will be posted on the website. If I understood correctly, and I'm sure our friends in the media will pick it up and make folks aware as well. I'm not hearing any additional questions. Edwin and your team, thank you for being here. Thank you for what we're studying and reviewing to embark upon. And thank you for your offer with the Spotswood property.
Thank you very much, everybody, for the time. They're excellent questions. Look forward to working with you again.
To be continued. Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation update on the Ready Grant. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hello, how's everyone doing? Thank y'all for having me here tonight. Tracy Lyons, I'm the Executive Director of our Chamber of Commerce. I know I know all of you on the call tonight, but wanted to say hello to the visitors. It's been a great call. I'm very energized about all the presentations tonight. Lots of good conversations of development and economic development, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. Just to give you guys a brief update, and I'm going to share my screen just so you guys have kind of, you have these in your packets. So you probably have a copy of this so you know what I am looking at. But just to give a little bit of background, many of you were here when we started this program, but some of you were not. So in early 2019, our Economic Development Committee started talking about a grant that was becoming available from the USDA. And it was a new grant. We were the first time. This was the first, I guess, applicant pool for the grant and it was called Ready. And it was rural economic development innovation. And it was basically in a way for, I guess, communities to come together to develop, you know, economic development plans and to really take a look at. It was mostly based on rural communities to take a look at what they were developing and what, where their assets were and maybe some opportunities that they hadn't identified yet. And so it is a capacity building grant. We were awarded, we're one of the 48 initial applicants that were awarded the Ready Grant. And it basically is a capacity building. So we were paired with a consultant. Leslie Shaler is with ACE Networks and she is here to give us kind of technical assistance. It was up to two years. It's been extended now because of COVID through March. So our kind of deadline of what we're looking at is March 30th. And we've been working with Leslie and initially, the Economic Development Committee kind of came together and said, this is what we want. This is what we could really use as a region. And that being a true, like, kind of roadmap for economic development. So looking at all of our communities and what we have, bringing those together, putting them in some sort of strategic roadmap so that we could identify, you know, where we were going as a community and where our opportunities lied and maybe some more assets that we could take advantage of. And so we've been working with Leslie. This is our committee members, you'll see on the screen, kind of listed here. Sam Krakenberger was kind of our, our lead chair at the time. He has since retired. He was the Economic Development Director for the county of Rockbridge. And since Jay Williams was our Chair of the Economic Development Committee, Jay has actually moved on. And so I am, I guess, essentially the chair for now until we find someone else. But I've been leading the project along with many others. You'll see the representation is really great to see. We have all the universities represented. Some technical, our technical schools, DABNY as well as Byers, all of our localities have been involved with this and many other small business owners, large business owners. And it's really been a really great community project. So since then, we originally were going to have some in-person events last March. We transitioned with COVID onto some online community sessions. A couple of you joined us today for our last community input session. And we were basically asking the community, you know, what is it? What are some barriers that you're coming into contact with? What is it that you want to see as develop? Where are we going? What are our strengths as a community? You know, how can we come together and, and partner to make our region really a true hub for economic development? So these are, these are some of the kind of goals that have come up and surfaced to the top. Our ultimate goal is from Leslie and her team with ACE Net is to give us a outline of a true strategic roadmap and some areas of focus. And so these are the five areas that we're looking at right now. We are, you know, connectivity to rural America. We know that broadband expansion is huge for us. Improving quality of life, downtown revitalization has been really big, including upper stories as well and livable, workable spaces. Supporting our rural workforce. So we know that we have some collaboration opportunities available to us in terms of workforce and what we can do with our educational institutions that are here. Technological innovation. So, you know, this focus on strategies for small businesses, remote workforce, IT firms, there's been a lot of conversations about that. And just especially since COVID hit, the shift to what working from home looks like and how important quality of life is. And then economic development, of course, entrepreneurship, expansion of small business and the programs that it takes to get entrepreneurs on their feet and to be successful. So we've kind of just kind of, I guess, taken all the comments from the, from the sessions and put them in these buckets. And so our next steps from Leslie are that she's going to kind of deliver to us some roadmap for opportunities for expansion, opportunities for growth, and then really some opportunities where we can look for some grant funding and some where we can come together as, as localities and work to gain some commonalities and common projects to enhance our area and opportunity for economic development. So we had our last session today. We talked about that. Our final report is supposed to come to the committee later this month and even February and looking at March timeframe, have the initial final project. After that, working at some presentations to City Council and we may try to host some sort of other, like we've done in the past, kind of all the localities coming together and doing a presentation just to have everyone together kind of in a maybe a Zoom meeting. Hopefully, eventually we'll be back in person soon. But this is kind of just our idea. That's what we've been working on. It's been our focus for Ready right now. The, what the good that's come out of it has been so encouraging to see how many people are willing to be at the table and have conversations, identify opportunities. There's a lot of growth out there, a lot of opportunity for growth. There's a lot of funding out there. We've been working separately on a lot of different applications for Go Virginia grants and some other grants that are out there. And there's buckets of funds that we are trying to get our hands on so that we can, we know we need the growth here. It's just finding that specific project that makes sense for our area and that is a really strong project that'll support workforce development, economic development, some of the, some of the things that we've, that have come up in these meetings. So that's kind of where we sit right now. I will say it's been, it's been very encouraging for us. For many years, we've been saying what everyone knows now to be true, but quality of life is so important. What people want when it, in terms of their work-life balance and their workforce and what they're looking for is very different than it was even three or five years ago. And as a region, we know that we have all those things to attract strong workers and workforce and, you know, some, maybe some new companies and some new development and projects and entrepreneurs. So we're excited for that. And I guess for right now, I'll take any questions about the Ready Grant and any comments that you guys might have of where we're at.
Members of council, have any questions? Wave if you do. Tracy, I just opine that the last group that got together like this with the consultant was the Rockbridge Area Outdoor Program. I think it's official title and have seen great success with promoting the outdoors and making our community much richer and better used and more efficient with the outdoor activities that we have. So very excited about the opportunities that you and Leslie and the whole team will be bringing forward. It sounds like you're in need of a chair. So are there any volunteers?
Love to have that. I do have one additional thing to share with you all. And it's kind of some, a good news story in terms of economic development. Jim had mentioned I could share tonight, but if you're familiar with the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, they are, Stephen Murray is our, you know, I guess fearless leader for the state. And he's done wonderful things in terms of economic development, bringing Virginia to the forefront of, you know, business and making us the number one state for business. And if you don't subscribe to their magazine, the, I'll show you this. I have it pulled up for you guys. This is a new magazine. They just started putting it out. This is a really good one focused on quality of life. And Lexington was featured and it's about to hit newsstands. We just got kind of the preview today. This is Lexington was kind of featured on the More Than Main Street page. The, I guess, the ultimate thing is that it's basically, Virginia is for everyone. There's Virginia is for lovers, but it's Virginia is for main streets. Virginia is for cultural, culture, Virginia is for outdoors. And Lexington was the feature here. There's a couple other sites in Rockbridge County that were also featured. And I'll mention, you can sign up for this to get this magazine. It's free and I, you know, I can help you guys get there if anyone wants to get it. But it's a great, just inside of what is going on on the state level of economic development, what others are doing and kind of maybe some good ideas of what we could do here in our community. So the Virginia Economic Development Partnership is who puts it out.
Terrific. Tracy, thank you again for being with us. I trust the, the children are in bed and preparing for a big fun Friday. And we're grateful for your time and effort, commitment, leading the chamber and specifically this Ready Grant. I don't see any questions. You're welcome to join us. You're also welcome to go make sure everybody's still in bed.
Yes, right. Thank y'all.
Next item of business is consideration of minutes. We had the work session in our packet and on Tuesday you received the, the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections or reflections on those? If not, we'll accept those as presented. And Janie, thank you for getting those delivered in a timely fashion. Next piece, item eight, the citizens' remarks and comments. And we have a few folks that have written in. And I'll get Jenny to confirm. We have one individual, I believe, O'Shawney is, has joined us and wanted to speak to council here on Zoom. And I would ask O'Shawney if she is with us. Let me.
Yeah, I'm here.
Excellent. I will remind you that this is a recorded time informal proceedings. So, and also afford you the, the three minutes that typically come with the opportunity to speak to directly to council. And I will turn the microphone, so to speak, over to you, the Zoom over to you. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me. I hope everyone's doing well. I think most of you have already heard from me several times over the summer. But again, my name's O'Shawney. I grew up in Lexington and I'm currently a senior in college out of state. I just wanted to speak to you all about a few issues that I hope will come up later tonight when we discuss the, or when you discuss the street renaming policy. I first want to thank the city manager for the work that he's put into developing it. I think like it probably took a lot of effort. And the fact that it exists at all shows me that city, the city is taking street renaming efforts really seriously, which I appreciate. But I do have a few questions about the fault policy. First, I'm not completely clear about the $400 fee associated with the application process. I understand that application fees aren't uncommon and that the money is intended to compensate city staff for the time that they spend handling the issue. But it seems like a particularly high price to ask private citizens to pay just to jumpstart the process. I'm also wondering why the city manager's office needs to be involved in a street name change. I'm also wondering why the city manager's office needs to be involved in a street name change. Based on my understanding of the discourse in past city council meetings and the written policy outlined in the planning commission's comprehensive report that we just talked about, the city council alone is responsible for changing the name of the street with a resolution. And I completely understand you would want to get majority approval from the actual street residents before you would make any kind of change like that. But it seems to me like bringing in a middleman would just create more work for everyone involved, like the city and the people. So I'd be interested to hear more about that. And I just want to close by saying we spent a good portion of the summer, I think, discussing this and city council multiple times when street renaming has come up before. Members have expressed their concerns about the burden that renaming the streets would place on the street residents. And I would have expected that a renaming policy would lessen and not exacerbate those burdens. And I'm not totally convinced that the policy as it is now actually accomplishes that goal. But I look forward to hearing the rationale behind it and the subsequent discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, O'Shawney, and thank you for being with us. As is customary with this time, we don't respond to your questions directly. And when we get to that item on the agenda, I anticipate city manager and city attorney will likely be able to address the questions that you've asked. Additionally, if there, if your questions are not answered or spark additional questions, please feel free to contact the, the city manager, of course.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us and thanks for your comments. Next, I call on Marilyn Alexander to begin the reading into the record emails that we received.
Dear members of Lexington City Council, I am writing to thank you for considering policies on changing street names. A few quick, quick concerns and questions came to mind as I read the current draft policy. One, the fee seems prohibitively high. I understand changes to street names shouldn't be take undertaken lightly, but such a heavy financial burden means unequal access. If a fee is deemed necessary, perhaps build in a way to offer exemptions or simply lower the fee. Number two, I worry about the city manager being gatekeeper if it's too much control in the hands of and burden on a single person. So many issues come up directly before city council. Why not this? I see some other cities go through planning commission as well. Three, I would think a public hearing should be required. Four, rather than a survey, use a petition. Five, in some cases, could common good be argued with no need for a certain threshold of residents of the street in question, in question approving? The popularity of a name doesn't always make it the best choice. Take for example, Bozy McBoatface. And in some cases, perhaps the reluctance of some residents ought not outweigh moves for change for the greater good. City streets are used by all residents and their names serve as a statement of what we as a community honor and value. Although again, changes to street names shouldn't be undertaken lightly. The process shouldn't prove too cumbersome or prohibitive. Thank you for your work on this important issue and for your consideration. Ellen Satrum, Lexington resident.
Charles, go right ahead if you don't mind.
Surely. This is a letter from Eli Spencer. And he begins, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to consider a policy regarding future street name changes. I have a couple of concerns. For one, the proposed, the proposal continues to put the onus on residents to initiate and carry out the process. While I understand that changing a street name would cause a number of minor inconveniences for the residents of that street, I don't think those inconveniences outweigh the negative impact that Confederate street names have on our town's image on a daily basis. Everybody uses these streets and everybody has to interact with their names. I hope that as this process continues to unfold, you will lean on the words you all spoke during the cemetery renaming process. If that rhetoric of making Lexington a more inclusive place applies to the name of a cemetery, then surely it applies to the names of the streets we all use. If you meant what you said over the summer, then I hope that you as elected community leaders will take this opportunity to start an honest discussion about what our community wants to celebrate moving forward. In my view, this is a citywide issue that requires citywide leadership. However, if you do decide to keep the onus completely on residents to initiate and carry out this process, then I see no need for the $400 application fee. I also don't understand the need for two separate surveys. And I have no idea why the city manager should act as the gatekeeper to petitions on this issue. What's wrong with citizens coming to council directly? All of these seem like unnecessary obstacles. Many of you have said that you are hesitant to act on Confederate street names because of the logistical issues that a change would cause for residents. I hope you see that this proposed policy would only compound those logistical issues. Thanks for taking the time to listen to my concerns. Sincerely, Eli Spencer.
This is a letter from Lucy Hanstead. Dear members of the Lexington City Council, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to consider processes around changing street names in Lexington. This is an important step to better our community. I'd just like to mention a few concerns I had as I read over the current proposal. One, the application fee is notably high, especially as just an application fee. Two, public hearing might best be required as part of the process. Three, changing street names should be handled as the cemetery name change was, meaning a single person shouldn't have sole control over the process. Four, a petition rather than a survey would take down implied barriers and allow for a simpler process for citizens. I am appreciative of the work and time put into this endeavor, but I believe it is important to acknowledge and try to diminish the burden that might be put on citizens with the current proposal. Thank you, Lucy Hanstead, Lexington resident.
I have a letter from Chris Ritter. Dear members of city council, hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Chris Ritter and I've been a citizen of Lexington my whole life. I hope you all are doing as well as you can in these troubling times. Weeks ago, rioters bearing racist symbols stormed the Capitol building in Washington. Last week, people bearing some of those same symbols marched in Lexington, keeping with tradition on the same weekend as the national holiday honoring the great civil rights activist, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I hope you will understand, given these events, that the work to end racism in this country and in our community is far from over. Part of this work is renaming streets in our town that honor the legacy of the Confederacy. After the ample open communication this summer that led to the renaming of Oak Grove Cemetery, I, among other, many other residents, looked forward to receiving guidelines from city council on how they would approach renaming streets. This week's agenda contains the guidelines we had been waiting for. Initially, I was excited. I looked forward to reading a proposal that would facilitate more communication between the city, council and its people so that we could continue our work from this summer openly and fairly. However, this is not what I found. I am disappointed to write to you today that the policy proposed in today's agenda is gravely flawed and to adopt it would be a disservice to Lexington City Council and any citizen who wants to be engaged with its local government in any way. Firstly, the application fee of $400 is not only a steep financial burden, but seems to hold no purpose other than to discourage citizens from applying. The proposal states simply that this fee is to process the application. Any person willing to pay this much money to engage with their government deserves to know how this money is being used. If extra staff or significant hours of work are needed to process such an application, the policy should state this clearly and specifically. Otherwise, this fee should not exist. Secondly, this policy is unreasonably complicated. The matter of renaming streets, like any government policy, should lie simply between people who want change and people who can make changes. According to city code subsection 356-20, city council has the sole power to rename streets. Therefore, this issue should simply be simply between Lexington City Council and the people of Lexington. The policy proposed here would create an unnecessary middleman in the city manager. While I mean no disrespect to Mr. Hallis and his work to create this policy, the policy itself makes him a gatekeeper between the people of Lexington and their own city council. Such a gatekeeper should not exist. With no fee and with no gatekeeper, Oak Grove Cemetery was renamed this summer through a collective effort between city council and the people of Lexington. This process was fair and included ample unhindered communication between the two. The process of renaming streets should be no different. While I understand that renaming streets is a more logistically complicated task than renaming a cemetery, these complications are accounted for in section C, where the city manager is tasked with contacting relevant agencies like the US Postal Service, et cetera. Renaming streets may be complicated, but it has no business being this complicated. The process should include public petitions and public hearings. The process should be free or clear and specific about its cost. To adopt the proposed policy would create barriers between the people of Lexington and its city council that did not exist before. It will make the work to make Lexington more welcoming to black people more difficult, more frustrating and more painful. That work will continue whether you adopt this policy or not. We look forward to doing that work together with all of you, but it is your job as our representatives to make this work easier, not harder on your constituents. Please do that job. Rethink this policy. Regards, Chris Ritter.
From Stephanie Wilkinson, dear Mayor Friedman and members of the Lexington City Council, I am writing to express my reservations about the proposed process submitted by the city manager regarding the renaming of city streets. It appears to me that the design of the proposal presents several unnecessary bars to citizen participation. This starts with the $400 fee just to get the application in front of the city manager, moves on to requiring applicants to conduct two surveys of residents where it seems one should suffice, sets up arbitrary and increasing thresholds of survey results. Parentheses, 60% approval for the first one and 70% for the second one. And parentheses, and possibly most troubling, it establishes the city manager as the first and only arbiter of whether an application merits review by the city council itself. This seems like needless hoops to jump through and worse, it would establish a barrier between the council and the people it represents. We are an engaged community. I understand that sometimes that presents a challenge for city council. I applaud the commitment and patience you all demonstrated during the discussion of the name change for the cemetery. It took a lot of time, but the community felt heard. Let's not descend into needless bureaucracy now. Please rethink the proposed policy. Thank you, Stephanie Wilkinson.
Thank you to all the folks that wrote in and thank you city council members for reading them into the record. We always do welcome citizens' remarks and comments and look forward to hearing responses to those issues raised and questions when we address that item later in the agenda. Next item is consent agenda. You have the resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning chapter into sidewalks, streets and sidewalks chapter, the code of the city of Lexington. And I'd ask for your consideration.
I approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Leslie, and a second by David. I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler.
I.
Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Ayers.
I.
Ms. Alexander.
I.
Ms. Strong.
I.
Ms. Alligood. I think you may have been muted there, Ms. Alligood, but it looked like an I.
I, it is.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, reports and commissions, Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Mr. Smith.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority met last Monday and we reappointed the following officers to the authority. Chairs Dan Lyons from Rockbridge County, the vice chairs Frank Friedman from City Lexington, the treasurer is yours truly from the City Lexington, and our secretary remains Lauren Potter. She's the admin in the office. Secondly, we did adopt and approve a board meeting calendar for 2021. It's hard, hard to say it. Sell two bids invitations will go out February 1st with anticipated construction beginning in April with completion by early part of '22 with put into use in April of, of '22. We should be hearing a proposed capital improvement plan from, from staff next meeting. And that's, that's all I have right now. Any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strong.
We met on Tuesday, January 12th in the Gateway Triangle Garden on North Main Street. That design, it's been approved by the ARB and now Main Street is working on fundraising for that project. Expected to be somewhere in the $30,000 to $50,000 range. The promotions committee had a merchant meeting in December and the feedback was that holiday sales were going very well. And Main Street sold over $38,000 worth of gift certificates last year. And that's all I have.
Let's see, is the great Gateway Triangle, the design, is that online? Or where can people get acquainted with that if they're not familiar with what the proposed design is? And the best way to support Main Street Lexington with a cash donation?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I'm not sure. I'll have to check in and see if it's online, but I'm sure everybody will be hearing more about it since they will be fundraising for it. But y'all find out if it's on their website and may get, see if they can put it on the Main Street website.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
We met last Thursday and we did a, sorry, corridor entrance approval for a sign for the BBNT bank building. They've changed their sign to, we did certificate of appropriateness. That's why I was looking for the word. We, they have changed it to BBNT slash SunTrust or they're going to, we made that approval. And they'll come back in about a year and end up changing that sign to Truist. So they're, as you know, the two have merged and they're transitioning in name and they're taking it slowly and they want the sign to reflect that. We also started working on the annual zoning ordinance amendments that we just approved during the consent agenda. And Arnie submitted the application for a grant for, to see if we get funding for a bike and pedestrian plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Leslie? Very good. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regional Tourism met on Wednesday, January 20th and members were introduced to Tourism's new visitor services director Denise Nies, who replaces the recently retired Marie Plank. Denise comes to us from several years supervising the volunteer staff at the Stonewall Jackson House and brings a wealth of experience in management and training, plus an in-depth knowledge of popular tourist attractions in our area. You might recall that last year Lexington resident Jerry Price was appointed to fill the remaining term of the retiring board member George Moore. Yesterday's meeting, Jerry was reappointed for a full three-year term to help represent Lexington on the tourism board. He was also elected board chair with previous chair Shane O'Lehman, elected vice chair. The board also voted to proceed with a paycheck protection program loan application. Tourism director Jean Clark will be submitting that to Jake, our finance director tomorrow. And I really want to thank Jake for all his help on that this past week. It was a very complicated process and we couldn't have done it without him. So thank you. Finally, I want to call everyone's attention to something happening in Richmond. The Virginia Museum of Fine Arts has an upcoming exhibition called Virginia Arcadia, The Natural Bridge in American Art, which is an exploration of the artistic portrayal of the natural bridge from the 17th century to the present. The exhibit will run February 6th to August 1st of this year. So if you're in Richmond, be sure and check that out. Does anybody have any questions?
Members of council, sounds like no questions, but thank you for sharing the detail of Marie's retirement. If you have a way to communicate with her, one of the worst things about COVID is not being able to celebrate people's time and efforts and commitments to organizations, and Marie was a spark plug, to say the least, in the tourism department, so.
Certainly was.
Wish her all the best in her retirement. If we can pass along through Jean, perhaps. Thank you for that report. Ra Ro, Mr. Ziegler?
No report.
Very good. Threshold, Ms. Alexander?
No report, except that there was a decision by the Chair and staff at City Hall that we probably should not meet again until around June 15th because of no activity due to COVID.
Another casualty. Good people doing good things and not being able to. Thank you.
Correct. We didn't want to confine people to having that time on their calendars to work around when it wasn't necessary.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, Recycling Committee?
Alrighty, I'll, I just wanted to bring council up to date on conversations that Jeff and Jim have had with the folks from RDS and the conversation I had with Jim and Jeff as a result of that, and some of the numbers in play for an alternative recycling program in the city. Bring us a little history. When COVID hit, we were scratching our heads on where to come up with some cost savings. So one of the victims was our recycling program, saving the city anywhere from $125,000 to $150,000 a year in rough numbers. As a result of losing that program, we had some concerns within the city about how to get that program restarted at some level, and the most viable option or the opportunity that's been presented so far is a program through RDS and Roanoke. RDS is working with the county, and RDS is working with Washington and Lee in their recycling efforts. So the program would be to install a vessel and a compactor over Public Works to handle customer consumer recycling drop-off at the Public Works site. Would not be handled externally through Public Works. It would be a, it would be responsible by the homeowners, by the consumers. So the cost just for installation from the city side, that would be site prep, an electrical hookup. Jeff had put a placeholder in the CIP for $70,000. After examining that a little further, that cost would probably fall down closer to $40,000. So that's what the city would be out if this program got started. Am I on the right track so far, Jim? Okay. Operating costs based on, get my numbers right. Get my, let's see, it's 60 halls a year at $545 a hall. To Roanoke would be almost $33,000 in hauling costs. The rental of the equipment from RDS runs $425 a month. So that would be just over $5,000 in rental costs. A number of about $20,000 was put out for labor, for staffing, part-time of the site. And that's, that's an estimate of 120, I'm sorry, 170 tons per year of recyclables. And those recyclables that would go to RDS would be mixed paper, cardboard, metals, and numbers one and two plastics. Glass is not part of the program, and neither are any other plastics that we're subjected to right now disposing in our landfill. Some of those costs would be offset by delivering material to RDS instead of the landfill. So 170 tons a year would not be going to the landfill, so our cost savings there is about $9,000 per year. We, the committee is planning to meet next Wednesday. I will bring this information to them, get their input and thoughts, and those are primarily representatives from Rack, Rockbridge Area Conservation Council, and the Fifty Ways Rockbridge Environmental Committee. And I'll report back after that committee meeting to see what assistance, if any, those groups might provide in this endeavor. Any questions?
Chuck, you know, Covington has been working similarly with RDS, and they have a survey of their residents that's open until February 4th that they've been kind of monitoring what their residents think about recycling over there. I wonder if they'd be willing to share any of those results with us in a week and a half or so when they conclude that survey. Just kind of throwing that out there, we're similar-sized cities. They are going to work with RDS. We're talking to RDS, similar programs. So I just kind of mentioned that.
I'll check into that and get with Jim and see what we can find out.
Chuck, did y'all have any conversations with RDS on the recycling? They were, I know in the past we had issues because they were throwing out, having to throw out a lot of loads. They couldn't be disposed because they were contaminated. And is that still the case? Can I tell you what, on average, how much actually gets recycled versus disposed?
The word back from RDS is that anything that can be recycled is recycled. They have a 12% contamination threshold on loads that are received in Roanoke. If it's above 12%, then we have a problem. We, a lot of that burden goes to the city for disposal. They're certainly not going to just, you know, incur the costs of extra disposal. So the upside is their contamination rejection rate is extremely low. So the folks that are recycling in the communities that RDS is servicing have been diligent about keeping contamination to a minimum. So my hopes are contamination will not be an issue, and we won't have to, we won't be running into extra costs because of that.
I, when the city stopped recycling, am I correct that that also brought an end to VMI's recycling? I do believe, and so I take it that they would not be included in this. This is purely residential, just we drive it over there. Because previously at VMI, every employee had a recycling bin in their office and a trash can, you know, we recycled. So I just kind of mentioned that. Obviously, they're a big, you know, a big partner with us in our community.
Jim, did you want to address that question or able to?
I had thought because I thought Councilmember Smith might, but no, VMI has not been included in the discussions at this time. I can certainly reach out to them, but we were not making plans to go over there and pick up the recycling.
I'm not certain how much recyclables were being produced by VMI. I would presume they're corrugated was, and they're scrap metals. We're working directly with Public Works to get those materials handled. Things like plastic and bulk paper are probably a different story, but I'll check with Jeff, get confirmation on that.
Any other questions for Chuck? Thanks for your heading committee and look forward to future updates as we work towards being responsible and taking care of Mother Earth. Under my report, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Lexington Police Department and the Virginia State Police and other agencies for their support with the parades that we had last weekend. Also wanted to say thank you to the participants who operated and had respectful and informative and civil events, and certainly set a great example for the rest of our country to follow. Very proud of our citizens and friends that were participating in the parades. And again, special thank you to the Police Department and the variety of agencies that come together to make that a safe event for all of our community. There's a federal program with federal funds that is, provides emergency food and shelter, a program that's offered. And in the past, the city manager has served as a board member or voting member of this organization or this committee that works through United Way and several other nonprofits in the community. And unless one of you objects and want to take on the responsibility, I would bring forward Jim's name as the representative and have the city manager continue to serve in that capacity as a board member for the emergency food and shelter program in our community. And again, the responsibilities are to oversee spending of, I believe, roughly $12,000, $12,000 to $15,000 of federal funds. And I'd ask for your consideration on that nomination. Jim, you want to do that?
If some of you want to volunteer, I have no ego in this, so.
Mr. Smith, thank you for that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Leslie, for a second. We have a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Your Ayers?
Aye.
Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye, and I would like to hear more about what this program consists of at some point.
City manager can certainly distribute that information to all of council and the media as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. At our last meeting, I was, unfortunately, I had to report to you that we had several COVID cases among city staff. At this time, I'd like to report we have no new positive cases, and those individuals on staff who had been positive are back at work and healthy, and they did not have any significant health issues with COVID cases, so that's good news. Also, just an update on the budget. City staff, Jake Adams and I, Finance Director, started our budget preparation and worked back in December. We're now currently at the phase where we're sitting down with department heads. We're reviewing their recommendations, and we're having good success getting input, as we always do from our department heads. Jake and I are in no position to put together revenue estimates, of course, at this time. But one of the things we are seeing is that some of the requests are somewhat higher than we've seen in the past, and that's because of a number of reasons. One is a number of the expenses we normally would have incurred this year were not funded. So we had some capital projects, some maintenance fund projects, other issues of that nature that maybe should have been done this year. They're carried over to next year, and we have the projects that were in line to be done next year also part of the budget requests that we're seeing. So we're going to be seeing some more requests and needs for funding than in previous years. At the same time, although we're all excited that COVID might bring us, the vaccine might bring us back to the new normal or to normal, probably revenues will not be normal. They may not be normal for several years. Our earliest projections are now that we will be operating with revenues less than in fiscal year '20. So we'll do better in this than in this current year, but probably not as well off as we did in fiscal year '20. So there's likely to be more gap between needs in our city, in our community, than there are the means. We'll have fewer revenue or less revenue and probably more needs out there. So it's going to be a little more challenging to balance the budget and for city council ultimately to look at the priorities of the city and decide, you know, among the different priorities, what we can fund this coming year. But we're working hard at it, and we'll bring you a good budget. I also want to mention bills in the General Assembly, because this is the time of year when we see legislation being considered by our delegation, and there are a couple of bills that are important to us, and I'd like to ask council for some input as to how we react. The first one is that you all are aware that we're considering a cigarette tax here with our neighbors, Univista, City of Univista and Rockbridge County. This is the first year counties could enact such a tax. We've had good cooperation, good discussion. Feel like we'd like to move forward with that to benefit everyone in the region. However, our Senator to the north, Senator Emmett Hanger, has put in legislation that in order to collect a tax, you'd have to form an administrative board that would administer the tax for at least 10 localities. So we're very concerned. The city managers, county administrators, and I up and down the valley have talked about that. That would add an additional layer of government, place additional expenses and restraints in place without any local control. And as we've seen in the past, when you put the taxes in the hand of another body, revenues to localities decline. Those funds go elsewhere. Not trying to be real critical, that's just the nature of the beast, at least. So we'd like to see efforts made with VACO and BML lobby against this legislation. The Commissioner of Revenues Association statewide of revenue, Commissioner of Revenue staff and that entity is already lobbying against it. And as you know, the Commissioner of Revenue here in the city and in most localities would actually administer that tax. They can take that on. It's not an additional workload. They don't need the additional help. They know it's better for our communities if they collect it and the money stays locally. So that's just something we need to watch, and I'd really like to see city council, either through me or through your own efforts, get in contact with our legislators and our delegation and say, this is a bad bill, and I can send you that bill. The second item of interest, and this did come from BML, and they've asked that all of us consider a bill that legalizes marijuana in most of our daily walks of life. No comment on whether or not that's a good or a bad policy. The issue, though, in the bill is that communities have no right to act on it. The only way we can make a decision as to whether or not we'd want to undertake the legislation and approve it in our community is by having a referendum to opt-out. We're already immediately put into the opt-in category. Again, communities all over the Commonwealth may have different views on what they want to do, and the legislation, the amendment to legislation being proposed by BML would allow the city council by ordinance to opt-in or any locality's board or council, or by referendum of the citizens to opt-in. So we wouldn't be put in a position where we're automatically in and had to try to opt-out. This way, if we want to do it, any community wants to do it, we can easily opt-in through action of the local government body. And so the BML is asking that we do contact our delegation and say that's the preferred way of dealing with the marijuana issue. Let communities choose. Just want to give another shout out, as Tracy Lyons did to, on the issue that was in the thing here, Virginia Economic Review, and primarily just to say what a great job Main Street Lexington does, Rebecca Logan, all the volunteers and her board to make our community the beautiful community it is so that we continually receive the recognition that we have recently. You know, they do a good job, as you well know, and I just wanted to point that out. And speaking of recognition, this past week Lexington Police Officer Lauren Dreeland spent an hour and a half in a storm drain catch basin removing a pet cat that got stuck in there. So she was down in that catch basin with some other city staff supporting her to get that cat out and return it to its owner. And I just think it's a commendable thing to do to be down there for an hour and a half in that restricted and probably uncomfortable space. As the mayor said, we had a great weekend for parades and events in the community, and I just ditto his words. Other good news, COVID vaccinations are speeding up. The pace of vaccinations is increasing, and that's a good thing. Lexington Fire Department EMS is ready to receive its second round of vaccinations very quickly. The schools are scheduled, I believe, for the end of next week, and city staff, if we can rely on the information we're hearing, will probably be vaccinated in the second half of February. So we're hearing some good things, some positive things about getting vaccines into the community. I guess the last item from me today has to do with our city planning day. You had to do the poll. The winner was the 25th of February in the afternoon. All of you were available on that date. So city staff and I will be putting together an agenda, getting that agenda out to you, and And of course, you all know the format there, we'll look at and discuss what the goals and priorities are of city council, look at the factors that might limit or guide us in that discussion. And we'll come out with a product that we'll use to set the agenda for the months to come. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Jim, a couple of questions. What time is that? You say Thursday afternoon?
Yes, the time slot we had available was 12 to 5:00. It'll probably be a shorter time slot, and again, I'll put that together with the, with the agenda. You know, allowing for lunch, some of you may be at lunch, getting off of work and leaving at lunchtime, likely 12:30 to 4:30.
Okay. One comment, I think it seems totally unmanageable to have localities opt in or opt out of the marijuana regulations. But I guess we'll see what happens with that. And in what's the update on an ordinance for changing our meeting time?
You know, we have to advertise the ordinances in advance. The city attorney has that ready to go. Janie Hostetter, the clerk, also has that ready to go. I believe we're going to get that on the, the next agenda in February, first part of February. I don't know if Janie or Jared or I want to comment on that, but I think Janie told me she can make that date. Pretty simple process, obviously.
Any other questions of council, of the city manager rather? Trying to update my calendar real quick to, for the retreat.
So Jim, just, I'm reading and trying to get up to speed here on Senate Bill 1326 as proposed by Senator Hanger in his interest for more government. What's his rationale? Do we know? I mean, is this something that we need to track now, big time? Because, you know, as I read this, you know, you know, it would set the maximum amount of a tax on a pack. Now, it's kind of, it's two cents per cigarette, so that'd be 40 cents a pack. But I mean, you know, did he not like the bill passed last year, therefore he wants more government involvement, I guess?
My understanding is that the industry reached out to him, the distributors, and they don't want to deal with local government directly. They'd like a series of boards or commissions across the state, eight or 10 of them to deal with, as opposed to 95 localities. And I don't, I don't know if there will be 95 localities, of course, but whatever that number is, they'd like to keep it simple for themselves. And of course, again, if you look at the duties of that commission, that commission would collect the tax, distribute the tax, order the coupons, get the coupons to the distributors, et cetera, all the things we could do in-house for nothing, relatively speaking, they would have to have paid staff to do.
Right, cigarette boards, tobacco commissions are very lucrative for those folks that have anything to do with them, right? And, and it's interesting, because it does mention that the Northern Virginia Cigarette Tax Board must already exist, and it would be considered a regional cigarette tax board for this purpose. So he's probably, Senator Hanger's a big fan of Northern Virginia, and he wants to mimic Senator in Northern Virginia in the rest of the Commonwealth, I guess. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the city manager? The next item on the agenda is review of a draft street renaming policy. Jim, if you can walk us through the details.
I will be happy to, Mr. Mayor. First item, would like to say it is a template, it is a draft. What I hope to achieve is to put something before city council that is a starting point so that we can, as a community and you as a city council, can look at some way of uniformly considering how to, to work with street renaming requests. And of course, I did not put this in place solely to look at the potential of renaming Confederate-related streets to something else. We have many streets in the community, over a period of a number of years, you could see a number of requests for renaming various different streets. So it differs dramatically from the one instance of renaming one cemetery as opposed to potentially dealing with several street names over 10 years. And that's how I looked at it. I don't have any ego or desire to be the gatekeeper, but to be uniform and to make sure that certain steps are followed through the proposal that you see has been put before you. The city attorney and I did review several policies, three to four, from other communities in the state. I asked the Virginia Institute of Government for policies that they could recommend and BML. So we did reach out across the Commonwealth to look what other communities are doing. The fee that's put in place is very similar to our fees for rezonings, for PUDs, for other requests in the city. There are substantial staff times for any of those requests. One of the things that wasn't noted, either in my briefing or by the citizens, is that should we have a street renamed, all the street signs have to be replaced, very significant, significant expense. If somebody's interested in renaming a street, seemingly it'll be more than one individual, that cost can be borne by a number of individuals. We didn't necessarily see it as a barrier or impediment to that process. So what we're looking at is a uniformity of having people come forward in the community, from the city. We don't need somebody from Montana coming in or New York City telling us what our street name should be. And they can come in as an individual, as a group, with a petition, any way, shape, or form, have an application, so we have the initial information, minimal information we need to process it. They can do a survey. A petition was considered, but you can get petitions and names on them from anywhere. Who's going to verify that necessarily? And a survey of those involved on the street is more valuable, in my view, and from what we saw in these other policies, than a petition from the community at large, you know? I personally don't want to see or don't want to be involved in a situation where people on the street overwhelmingly disagree, but you have a survey, or I shouldn't say a survey, a petition out there that overrides their desires. Again, it's not an issue of what the current social concerns are in the, in the nation. It's of what happens five years from now when somebody says, I want to rename a street. And this has totally nothing to do with the social tensions or socialists', social issues of the day. So that's really what I was trying to accomplish, is give us, you, a tool, something where we can look at this over a period of time, look at a variety of different streets that could come up for very good reason, and do it uniformly as opposed to, and I understand the concerns or comments made by the community of it could be done on a very informal basis, community having conversations directly with city council. But then do you have a, a process that is fair to everyone, where all the steps are followed in each case? That may not be the case. Of course, it is your tool, your means of making this change. You can make a determination to do something very different. It could be a straight up and down vote of the citizens. It could be just a petition that you consider and then move through that process yourself. Again, I have no ego in this, no reason to be personally involved as the gatekeeper, but we're just trying to put a uniform process in place and pick up on some of the things that have been used in other communities. I'm willing to answer any questions, but again, this is very much a template.
Thank you, Jim. I would like to emphasize the fact that this is a draft. There may be lots of details. Obviously, the first time that we've looked at it collectively, have a chance to talk about it. Glad to do that this evening. We're in no rush from that standpoint of working towards a due date of any type. So if we would want to designate a work session at some time in the future to focus on this exclusively, would welcome or offer that as a, an idea for a good way to move forward. But I think it will necessitate some significant dialogue, but would open the, the floor for questions and issues that you'd like to raise this evening.
Jim, what, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Leslie.
What is the purpose? And, and you say survey, I'm assuming a survey is somewhat of a petition, but we can cover that later. What is the purpose of having two of them?
Well, one is, you know, they could bring in a survey and basically select who they talk to on the street. Well, the, the person making the application, the applicant or the request for the renaming. You know, clearly, they could bring forth a survey, when there's 55 residents of the street, they survey 20. 10 of them, 11 of them say we support it, they've got the majority. Did the other 35 even get approached?
Yeah.
Or did the other 35 want to comment? So that's where the verification would come in. If they brought in a ser-, well, if they did a survey and the results were negative, they wouldn't come back, would be my guess. But if they have what they consider to be positive results, and if there are 55 residents on the street and they get 50 of them, there's no need for a second survey. But again, if there's 55 residents and they only get 20 responses, maybe there is a need for a second survey.
I guess.
Be fair to that, those citizens.
Yeah, I guess I was, I see it as they need to talk to everybody. First, I guess I'll throw out a couple of things. I think that whoever initiates the survey needs to be a property owner on the street. I think it sets up a bad dynamic, having someone who doesn't even live on the street initiate it. They're welcome to talk to a property owner and, and try to convince them to start it. But if somebody you don't even know initiates this, and you have questions about it later, you, you can't go back to them. If it's a neighbor, you can have an ongoing conversation with that person about the whole issue. I, I do agree, I think $400, even though it doesn't begin to cover our cost, is a little bit prohibitive. I think the survey should only, first of all, I think a letter should be sent out to all property owners on the street, notifying them that I'm planning to bring forward this petition or survey requesting a name change and letting, making sure everybody knows in writing. And then, again, you have to, you have to get signatures from at least 60% of the people on the street. And so I don't really see a need for two surveys. And I think we definitely should have a public hearing as well.
I did have the public hearing there as an option. It'd be up to city council, again, if 90% of the people or 95% said yes, do you need a public hearing? That's up to you, yeah.
And I think you need to be clear about 60% that when we're talking right here, it's 60% of the addresses. You know, that if four people live in one house, they can't sign it four times. I mean, I think we just want to be clear about that.
Is it addresses or resident? He does say addresses, but what do you think? Is it addresses or not residents, property owners?
The, the property owner for that address is what I meant by that, so the address on the street.
So that address would get one vote.
Pardon me?
That, that address would get one.
Correct, one vote.
Okay. And.
Jim, one concern I had, first off, thank you, thank you guys for working on this, and, and we do need a policy. And even though we might, you know, disagree on the procedural parts of it, I really appreciate you, you putting this together. But one thing that I'm concerned about is, is in the procedure, I, one, I do think we should call up a petition and not a survey. I think we can get down to one petition if they petition the property owners. And I think these petitions should include the proposed name, because there's, there's no point in asking somebody, oh, would you like to change the name of the street, but not the actual name of the street. So from my perspective, I think the easiest thing, and what I would be comfortable with, is if, if, if residents of a particular street came to city council with a petition with 60% of the property owners saying, we would like to change the name to this, then the presumption would be that we would agree to that, unless there's something horribly wrong, like it's Bodie McBoatface, as somebody mentioned in, in the public comments. So we're just there to make sure that doesn't happen. But I, I, you know, the, the, the process we went through with the cemetery, that was very instructive, and I'm very glad we did it. But there's just no way we could do that for the 30-odd streets that people want, you know, might have an interest in changing their names on, or any in the future. So, so we really need to put the onus on the citizens to come to us with a petition with the proposed name and the approval of a predominant number of the property owners on that street. And if that happens, from my perspective, I would, I would be receptive to that.
Do we have any responsibility to put together the steps that would, that a resident would need to follow once their street name is changed, so that we are all playing from the same, you know, have the same set of facts on what the true implications of an address, street name? I mean, I think that that might impact folks' potential, they would just want to know before they sign a petition, they might, they might be interested. What does this mean? And is government, is the city able to, to put that together, or, or should we let people figure it out on their own?
I agree, David. I think that as, as caretakers of not only the city properties, but also caretakers really of our citizens. And they need to be made aware and be educated on how they are affected personally and what all they would have to, have a checkoff list of all the things that they would be expected to change on a personal level. Bank accounts, deeds, all kinds of things, just that we, just so that we're upfront about it. Because we shouldn't be signing off on something and then people are saying, well, you didn't tell me this, or I didn't know that I'd have to go through all of that. I think that we should be totally transparent with whatever we're doing.
David and Marilyn and Dennis hit on all of my points. I don't think we need to encumber the process. It looks like we're having a work session right now. I don't think we need to encumber the, the process as much as been, has been proposed. I think Dennis's idea, it, it should, it should be simplified, it shouldn't, it shouldn't need to be complicated. And to David's and Marilyn's point, the residents need to have a very clear understanding of what is going to, what, what they're going to have to do as a result of the name change. I think 60% is too low. I think it should be a number like 75% of the addresses on that street need to approve the name change. I also may suggest that the, the signage cost should be, that burden should be incurred by, by the street, by the residents on that street that, that request the, the name change. I think that's, that's a pretty fair thing to do. As, if, if it wants to go to public hearing, that's fine, but, but there's your $400 application to just cover the advertising costs that, that this group of residents, like any other application group or, or entity, have to incur as a result of making government work. Government isn't free. We, we have costs and we need to pass those along when we're doing projects and, and, and concentrating on groups instead of the citizenry at, at large. You know, those, those groups need to bear some of the costs because of the, the proposals that they, they have on everyone else and, and, and the government. So that, that's where I'm at.
I think a work session's a great idea. I think, you know, Leslie thought $400 is too much. You know, I think Chuck points out that $400 doesn't come close to covering the costs if we were to actually change the name of a street. It might cover an advertisement in the paper or two if we are going to have a public hearing, that's a great point. It doesn't, it doesn't cover the city's expense if our attorney is involved. As soon as one resident on that street gets an attorney and they send a letter to the city, our attorney starts to work, you know, another, those are more bills for the city responding to citizen actions. And, and so I think it works sessions so that we understand and we're good stewards of the city, good stewards of the city, our resources, I think we really need to, you know, work on this as a policy before we need it. It's, it's excellent to have a policy in place so that people are treated equally and fairly and, and not differently based on the emotion in the room or in a meeting when you're dealing with something like this.
I'm glad that we're talking about the fee, because I know that sometimes in places that people charge a fee, but they don't, whatever they're doing does not cost whatever that fee is. So as long as we're clear about, you know, this fee is not covering nearly what it's going to cost. The city, that's important to be transparent about that, too, if it's going to be at $400. And at what point do they pay that fee?
Yeah, I, I. Plus, if you have 15, 15 houses on a street, everybody kicks in 30 bucks, there's $450 right there.
Yeah, but, but I think ultimately, if the name isn't changed, that, that should be refunded. Or I don't think people should be paying $400. Or I don't think people should be paying $400 if the name isn't actually changed. So a refundable application would make sense to me, I guess.
Or they pay the fee at the time they have the percentage of names on a petition to move forward. Because if they don't have the percentage of, of of responses from those addresses, then of course they wouldn't need to pay anything because it's not going to go any further.
That, that level of detail I would suggest needs to be in sync with our other programs. So if someone's applying for zoning or making application for something, even if it doesn't go their way, we tend to not refund that. So I'd turn to our attorney to make sure we, that, that level of detail to revisit. And that's revolve even, but there are a couple of things thrown out. The recommendation, the draft recommendation says any citizen of Lexington, Leslie made the suggestion that it be someone on the street. Is there an objection to that? Or is all council, would you like to see that change from any citizen to any citizen of that street?
I'm with Leslie on that. I think it should come from a property owner on the street.
But you would start having a lot of resentment if it's not someone on that street.
Fair enough. So that Jim, there's an indication for an adjustment for you. One of the other things that I think that Dennis will get credit for, the application requesting to change it should also include a recommended name. Does anyone have any objection to an application coming forward with a recommended name on it? Clearly, it could be changed through the process, but I, I respect Dennis's recommendation there.
In an effort to make this efficient as possible, the name should be part of the process. We don't need to go back and forth.
Okay. The idea of city notification to people on what's going to happen. And I guess, Jim, if you can work on what that would look like, because we've talked about mortgages, we've talked about business relationships. There's also the idea, I think a passport costs about $135 to, to change.
Insurance policies.
Yeah, correct. So.
Every utility bill.
Right. What that notification would look like. Chuck had suggested a number like 75% would, he would be more comfortable with. And I would ask council to weigh in 60, 75, 90, you know, what's your pleasure in looking at that? And as while you're reflecting on that, this is just to give the city manager guidance to rework this draft. One of the things I think of interest is if you have 55 lots on a street, or 50 lots on a street, perception would be it has to be 75% of the 55. Not as the city manager indicated, you do a petition and you have four people from one home that sign it. And so it looks like you have four people. It would be 55, 75% of the 55 homes. An unintended consequence may be divorce if we have divided homes on what the name should be of the street. Just kidding. But I think it's important to detail that or work towards that detail.
You might also have a problem where a property owner owns more than one property on a particular street. And if that's the case, then I think they should get a vote for every, every property they own on that street. So it should, the vote should go with the property, basically.
Deeded property. So if I own three lots on Friedman Street, I get three votes.
And you might make that buildable lots because I own a little sliver. I'd be happy to have two votes on my street, but it's not a build, the second one's not a buildable lot, just.
But due to that, if I own an unbuildable lot, am I counted as an address? And am I, am I still getting, am I still getting mail? Do I still have to jump through all the same hoops that all the other people on my street have to jump through?
They still pay taxes on it. So they get mail in regard to that.
Exactly.
They'll have deeds.
So yeah, Leslie, you get two votes.
And any comments or feedback to share on the percentage? I think, I thought we were going to have a work session. I guess we're working through everything right now. So I. We don't have to dive into it, but these are issues to help move this policy closer. I think that when we get kind of a rough list of what folks might need to do as a result of a road, a street change name, in the interest of being transparent that there's a, that we even put costs in parentheses. Like Frank said, a passport, what does it cost for a new driver's license? Items like that, just again, so that there's an accurate number out there that, that if it, you know, it might be, it might end up being 100, you know, $500 if you've got a passport, a driver's license and a deed to change, you know, you might not get some packages for a while because of addresses changing and how fast FedEx and UPS get caught up with the new app, you know, just the little things like that. I think transparency is very, very important for all of our residents.
Absolutely.
I'd still like to suggest a letter has to be sent to all property owners presenting that, the issue so that everybody's informed whether or not they're on the petition or survey or not. Everybody needs to know.
The, obviously, we recently did a survey doodle to figure out when we would meet for our retreat. I wonder if an electronic survey to all homeowners could be a better option, not in addition to your written notification, Leslie, that you're recommending. I think that that, that is a good, good policy that the city is notifying them. And we have record of notifying everyone that perhaps to go to this survey and indicate their preference for agreeing of the name change and the proposed name from the application. The details to be worked out, but.
Put the notices in the water bill. Every, every place is going to get a water bill, I assume.
No. Leslie's sliver is deeded separately, doesn't get a water bill.
Sometimes a property owner doesn't get the water bill. It's the whoever's living there, the renter.
Yeah, could, could be a rental arrangement.
Is a survey this different from a petition? I mean, I'm still envisioning that you have to get a petition with somebody's name and their address and maybe last four of their socials so it can be verified. Is that? What is a survey?
The distinction we were making was the survey was of the actual property owners on the street. Whereas a petition would be, you know, standing in front of Kroger and having people come sign up with saying, yeah, we should change that street name. So maybe that was being a little bit too, trying to be too precise. But that was the idea was that the survey is directed at the actual property owners on the street to determine their needs as opposed to a more general petition.
Okay.
I think it might, for, 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 for the public's purposes, it might be easier to understand if you just say a petition of the property owners, you know, and stay away from the survey language. That makes it a little more confusing, I think.
I like the idea of putting the name, the proposed name of the street after it's changed on that piece of paper that people are going to sign.
Yeah.
Any other feedback for Jared and Jim? Again, this is a draft. The big ambition is to find a policy that's going to be responsible and respectful and specific for all streets for now and into the future. And I appreciate the work that Jared and Jim, surveying folks around the state and coming up with some best practices. And I'm impressed as always with council's ability to tweak it to suit our community as, as necessary. Say again, Marilyn?
I was thinking, once all the tweaks are put in place on, in one document, then that's when we can schedule a work session to go over it.
Correct. Yeah. And I hope we start getting feedback from citizens, you know. I've already received some and I hope folks continue to be engaged in the city and let us, let us know what they think about it. Again, I strongly believe it's, it's important to develop a policy now before it might be needed and so that it's transparent to all that is, everyone that's involved with as little emotion as possible. That's a best practice that, that does right by the citizens, by the city. So I think it's really important that we're doing it now.
I think that once something gets to council, I'm hoping that the majority of the people on that street have participated in conversation and that they agree to it. And I think we need to go back over their percentage again in, in that next session to determine what's the best percentage to kind of hold down a lot of the disagreement about it.
Yeah, that's right. Ms. Mayor, I wasn't quite ready to say whether I agreed with the 60% or 70% tonight. That's something we might have to think about.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Progress just, it was thrown out and I just didn't want to not address it. We can take, take it as we progress. And one thing I want to hammer home unequivocally for folks, the suggestion that we're trying to separate the citizens from city council could not be further from the truth. There is no intention of that whatsoever. We just want to create an orderly process, taking into consideration the, the impact that this will have on people in many things that we can't even think about that, that might be an impact. We've talked about passports and packages and deeds and things of that nature. And there are certainly unintended consequences that could come about. Heaven forbid there be a tragedy with 911 and not being able to find the home. Those type things are critical and our ambition is not to make Jim a gatekeeper whatsoever. But he is our city manager and our strong city manager form of government expect him to, much like our planning director, to work through handling processes and working with citizens as we do as well. So again, please understand our intent with, as David L. stated, for transparency and respect for a process that is unpassion and fair to all citizens of our community.
As a source of information, several weeks ago, there was a news item that I read that wrote about the city of Richmond changing the names of two streets. And so they've already begun the process there and perhaps contact with the city manager of Richmond to see what happened there. I suspect those streets were long streets.
My brother-in-law lives on one of those streets.
So it would be a good source to just see how it's playing out in Richmond.
Senator Kane also lives on that street.
And the city of Richmond, of course, is a strong mayor form of government. So city manager wouldn't have as much input as the mayor, but we can certainly reach out to city of Richmond and learn from their experiences and best way to, again, positively impact the community.
It'll be Mayor LeVar.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Anything else regarding renaming policy from council? Jared and Jim, any questions or concerns?
None from me. I'll try and take the comments that you had and put this bet together as another updated draft that you can see before the work session or review and further comment, just to see what I can do there.
Terrific. Thank you, sir. We'll share a quote from Bergen Baldwin Evans. "Freedom of speech and freedom of action are meaningless without freedom to think. And there is no freedom of thought without doubt." And I think there's no doubt the intent of council to get this right and to take their time and come out with an effective policy for our community. And I appreciate council's dedication and commitment to working towards this. And also the commitment and dedication of the folks that wrote to us this evening and spoke to us this evening. And I'm sure folks will be hearing from in the weeks to, in front of us. So thank you all very much. Next item on our agenda is the city attorney. And Jared, I know we have the confirmation, the emergency declaration. And we'd ask for council's consideration.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Chuck.
Second.
Dennis with the second. Any discussion?
Can't wait till we don't have to do this anymore.
Amen. Roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ayers?
Aye.
Sigler?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Gallagher?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. We will continue to zoom for the foreseeable future and look at it Wednesday's healthy and virus-free. Jared, anything else from your window of the world?
Just the brief update on that, that will take us 60 days from now will be time to renew the six-month ordinance. So at our March 18th meeting, will be roughly a year since we passed the first ordinance. And then just quickly on the water tower case, we have some positive movements, but still no complete resolution. But progress is always a good thing. Unfortunately, we don't have a ton of leverage to speed things up, but we're doing what we can. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jared. Hope, hope that you can gain some traction and we can see the work of Edwin Gaskin and his team on the water tower in the very near future. Have no other business to come before city council. Thank you again all for what you do for our community. Happy 2021 and look forward to seeing you again in February at our first meeting or the first Thursday in, in February. Until then, have a great night and a better weekend. Thanks, Janey.
You too. Bye-bye.